Call the, what is this? This is the Joint Town Council Special Meeting and Budget Committee meeting for Thursday, March 21st to order. And Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Peter Talbot.
Here.
Jim James.
Here.
Dina Allard.
Here.
Fiona Pearson.
Here.
Don Walsh.
Here.
Trish Kramer.
Here.
Greg Wolfe.
Here.
David Belber.
Here.
John Mylone.
Here.
Thank you. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And with that, I will turn the meeting over to our Budget Chairman, Mr. Jenks.
Thank you. I should have said the other night, but I just wanted, I hope it kind of goes without saying, but hoping this whole process is very collaborative amongst all of us, like it has been for the past four years at least that I've been on the council. So we definitely want to make this as much, as much a budget, you know, we've all got a lot of input in. You know, obviously we may have disagreements on things like we always do, but we'll, cooler heads will prevail and we'll come to a final budget. So tonight we have Public Works, Engineering Water Pollution Control. Who drew the short schedule first?
Well, if I'll just do a quick introduction and then I'm going to kick it over, probably go in that order, if that's alright. But yeah, first of all, thank you to everyone for being here tonight. This is, as you can no doubt tell, or you'll remember from my pie chart the other day, is really in many respects the largest portion of our budget, both with respect to operating and obviously heavily capital intensive. And you're going to hear a lot about the wide variety of services that we provide through our Public Works, Engineering, and Water Pollution Control. And again, just to kind of a reminder and sort of set the stage, when we talked the other night about sort of breaking it all the way down to sort of what would it be on a monthly basis, all of the content you're going to hear tonight from, including Public Works and Engineering and Trash and Recycling Collection, when you combine those two, it's about, for the average taxpayer, about $43 a month. We think it provides excellent value for all the services we've got throughout the year, not just in the winter, not just in the summer of road paving, but everything that we do throughout the year, all of the grounds. Again, I don't want to steal Dan's thunder when he goes through the presentation, but he's going to give an overview, a high level overview of basically all of the major drivers, also the major components of the budget. And again, then we're going to go to Engineering and then WPCB again, a little different animal because it's a special fund, not directly supported by operating tax dollars, but instead through sewer use fees. But we'll get to that after. So with that, I think I'll turn it over.
Sean, before you do that and before Dan starts, so the Public Works is, you know, the tab as we know it.
Yep.
Looks different this year because of the, you know, the move of some of the Public Works to an Engineering Department.
It does. So yeah, I'm glad you mentioned that. And that will be, you'll see some of that in both Dan's slides and again, of course, through all of Merrick's because we are, as we've moved away from a joint Public Works and Engineering, shared director position and also operating structure, we've now elevated in the last six months, the engineer position to its own department head level position, supervising water pollution control as well, whereas now Public Works maintains, of course, highways and capital, but also grounds division and the others within the Public Works Department. So they work very collaboratively, they're still physically in the same office spaces, but you will see some, year to year, there's always going to be one year where you have to kind of re-sort the budget and you kind of lose the history. So of course you'll see some zeros where Engineering's been removed from Public Works and you'll see what looks like a brand new department. Really, it's a lot of lateral shifts, but we'll make sure we can answer any questions on that. And then yes, just to kind of a quick, it's kind of our first time going through the budget, we often refer to, these used to be called the big book and the small book, they are now almost the same size. I've taken it to calling this one sort of the vertical, right, and the horizontal. The horizontal though is really our line item detail for all operating budget items. Every single line item is in this budget. We typically will, after presentations, to answer some of the questions, we'll point to those slides and I'll be sure to, or those pages, and I'll be sure to kind of identify where we are as we go along. This document, of course, not only contains now all of our capital budget requests, but the summaries of the departments, their mission statements, their goals and objectives, their performance measures are all their own section here and they tie, of course, back to this book. But for today, mostly you'll be using your horizontal and kind of flipping through as we ask questions about individual line items.
So just so I understand, so Public Works and Engineering are now two separate departments, one doesn't fall within the other in any way?
That's right.
They work collaboratively, but they're separate?
They do under the, yeah, it's a great question. On the functional area, you'll see the tab is still called Public Works, just like we have Leisure Services and Cultural Services where there's multiple departments within. But yes, we created a new account code within the realm of the broader Public Works function, but it is its own budgetary division headed up by Merrick, the town engineer, as basically the director of Engineering. And that ends up mattering for purchase orders and payroll and reporting through finance so that it's cleaner, we're not having folks, we're not having budgetary items that one department head is at, who's responsible for needing to be approved by a different department head, right? So it keeps things to the limit. But that's wait and see at that point. Alright, so with that, without further ado, I'll turn it over to Dan Bombera, Acting Director of Public Works.
I appreciate everybody giving me the opportunity to present to you tonight. As Sean so graciously mentioned, we will be going over the Public Works Department, which now is segmented from Engineering. One point I mentioned and kind of in line with what Sean was leading to is where things fall in the budget. The Public Works Department, and in the budget book before you, contains in itself the administration area, highways, and grounds. Outside of the Public Works budget is the Public Properties budget, which follows more underneath the general line of finance and administration. So that's actually in a separate part of the book. While they do fall with underneath the Public Works umbrella, their budget numbers are separate from the whole number as we look at it today. So we'll have two different areas to focus on. What we'll do is we'll start to go through the slides here, some high level overviews of what, you know, Public Works is. Public Works manages the development and maintenance of improvements in the town and infrastructure. We have our highways, grounds, public properties, and fleet maintenance, which does a great deal of work and maintenance for not only Public Works, but our Police Department, Fire Department, Human Services and Leader Services, as well as our WPCD on all equipment, including, you know, small equipment, weed whackers, fleet blowers, anything that we use in town, our fleet maintenance crew is on and they do a great job at it. Starting in the office, a huge part of our department and really the backbone of keeping everything working straight down the line from things I'm involved in, all the way down to the folks in the garage, our mechanics. We have three professional staff in our office that work diligently daily. Kind of a testament to that is the fact that to date, this fiscal year, they've already processed 1,860 invoices for the Public Works, Engineering, Public Properties, Grounds, and Fleets. That's a staggering number when you really look at how much paper comes through the office, how much accounting that we do, and how much hard work they're involved in on a daily basis. They also create an average of 120 work orders per month for our residents and our staff. Couple key categories that you really look at when it comes to our residents is the type of things that they're getting calls about, creating work orders, disseminating work to the appropriate staff within the department, working with our facilities teams, a great broad spectrum of things that they do for them, as well as working with contractors as they come in to help them assure that they have the appropriate bonding, they're getting sewer maps from them, pulling street excavation permits, and helping them with their sanitary sewer applications. Our highways division, obviously everybody is familiar with that group. Mostly they see fear seen with the snow and ice side of it, but as a department, we have the superintendent, three crew leaders, and 13 maintainers. They're responsible for 153 miles of road, 115 miles of sidewalk, 5,950 catch basins, 693 outfalls, and three municipal dams. On average, they're cleaning upwards of 800 of these basins a year. They're doing work in conjunction with our paving operations, replacing catch basins, doing inspections, street sweeping. They're also on call for storm events. Pre-storm preparations include driving all of their plow routes, 10 miles plus each of the drivers is responsible for, inspecting catch basins and outfalls, making sure that the waters that we're going to get in the last couple of years, increasing waters that we've been seeing in storms greatly impacts flooding we've seen on the roads. And their efforts have reduced those flooding events by making sure that the structures are clean, free of debris. They're also involved in responding to calls for downed trees, assisting our police departments, our fire department, and responding to events and keeping the drive-in public safe. Our grounds division, we have six parks, actually, we have one crew leader and four groundskeeper in this division. And they're responsible for six parks, four parklets, one dog park, 1,500 acres of open space, 7.5 miles of linear trail. And their work is only augmented part-time by summer help. At times we see up to 10 summer helpers come on. That number fluctuates, see if that is beginning of the season, a couple go on vacation, decide not to come back. So our backbone crew here for all of those areas is really only five members of the team. In that, you see a little breakdown of some of the daily operations they're responsible for, some of the unrealized work that they do, something as simple as emptying 95 trashcans in our parks, parklets, and open spaces. We have 25 fields that we're now maintaining after having taken on some of the fields at Fordham, which are, of the 15 baseball fields, four of those are Fordham properties now. We have a great use of these fields, a continuing growing group that wants to make use of these fields, which means more time spent upkeep, maintenance, and striping before and after events. These members of our team are also involved in our snow and ice operations. Some of them have their own plow routes, others are responsible for clearing around buildings and taking care of the sidewalks for that are municipal responsibilities. They also do regular inspections and maintenance on our trails and our open space properties. Public Properties, small number of crew, we only have two members of the crew who are dedicated full-time to our 16 buildings and 200,000 square feet of occupied space. This staff is on call to address after-hours emergencies, talent equipment, events that happen at the Police Department, which is necessary to be online 24 hours a day. They also work with our civil preparedness, moving generators when we have power go out, you know, for instance at the Highland Freezer, which is critical to keep online. The 16 buildings we have listed here, I think we're all familiar with them. They're involved in HVAC, electrical, general maintenance at all of these facilities. And on a daily basis, they're receiving numerous calls for support in one mean or the other, whether it's AC related, heat related, or any of the other items that our staff or patrons might call on. Our mechanics, we have fleet manager, senior mechanic, and two full-time mechanics. These four individuals are responsible for the upkeep and maintenance of over 267 town vehicles and pieces of equipment across the town apartments. A little overview of how that shakes out across the board here. A lot of the Public Works equipment, it breaks down to that small equipment, the weed whackers, blowers, the lawn equipment for the grounds folks, and they do a phenomenal job of keeping us on the road during snow and ice operations to keep things running smoothly. Brief overview of our department, the two areas I mentioned earlier is the Public Works section of the budget, as well as the Public Properties section of the budget. You'll see in red that we're showing decreases in both of those lines respectively. However, a lot of that movement has to do specifically with the Public Works line with the restructure and relocation of the Engineering Department to its own category. And down to the next level on the Public Works side specifically, and you see the asterisk represents the line specific, obviously Engineering and Administration affected by this departure of the Engineering folks. The town engineers' salary, 50% funding from that was previously paid for with WPCB, the other 50% fell underneath the Administration line. And the other side of the Engineering, the staff and lines carried by that division, the Public Works are no longer falling underneath this budget. We do see the change, the deduct on the Administration line. That's not 100% reflective of the full departure of the Engineering staff from that line, but we'll fold into that later. Some of the major changes, as I briefed on, to the Administration, Engineering, Highways, and other lines in the department, I have little brief descriptions there. Again, in the Administration side, there's a reclassification of the projects manager position to a deputy director position to be full funded by the town versus a 50% fund by the Board of Education. And the remaining balance of the Engineering Department, or the Engineer, Town Engineer line will be moved to offset some of that cost. Engineering Department obviously zeros out. Other increases underneath highway, sidewalks, and drainage are relative to these, to Regional Water Authority, which are calculated by regional, provided to the town. That's actually for the water mains in the roads and our ability to use them. And then other salary adjustments, we had a lot of newer staff on the Public Works side who are still in the midst of climbing that step-by-step increase towards the top of their tiers, and that's part of the driver for those increases. Snow and ice, we were actually able to offer a minor decrease to that line. While certain lines increased, we were able to reduce in other places, specifically in the fuel line, which offset some of the increases in cost of salt and other materials that support those operations. Trees is a large increase from what it was previously funded at. Years past, that line fell as a capital line, and this proposal moves that back from a reoccurring capital line, which was funded every three years, to an annual fund of $25,000. Years past, again, it was a funded line, and then that went to the capital line that was originally funded to combat the Emerald Dash bore when it came through, decimating the ashtray, and it was an unforeseen expense that it would ensue. So this moves us back to a position where we won't be funding through capital and paying the long-term interest on the funds that we are using. A solid waste line, I have a separate slide because it becomes a little bit more complicated. And our grounds line is an increase reflecting in addition of the groundskeeper position to again combat this, the continued increase in demand for use of our fields, the onboarding of Bartlett Park, now more in the short term than the long term, and help our crews to better manage and maintain our facilities.
Is the, sorry, is the $25,000 for the trees there the same that the beautification committee is spending? I saw there's $25,000 for beautification committee.
This is tree maintenance, this is mostly removal. Right, so tree, yeah, so mostly tree removal, tree trimming, as Dan said, yeah, so separate from anything for beautification.
I know that they used to contract that out or something, I don't know if they were moving that, having the town do that now.
Oh, you're talking about all the trimming, the Bradford repair?
Yeah. Bradford repair has its own line.
There's a separate line.
And it's within the beautification budget.
Gotcha, okay.
But yeah, as Dan said, it's worth noting on that one, and that's a theme, you know, we are trying to get, we've had some of these items that have kind of morphed into sort of more maintenance items show up in the capital budget. This was always one of the examples I used of kind of why it's a little more traditional to consider both a operating and capital budget at the same time. Here, when I started, we used to do the operating budget this season and then we'd do the capital budget in the summer. And this allows us the opportunity to sort of make sure we're, you know, discussing both, and sometimes you have options, you could fund things through the capital budget, you could also fund through operating. In this case, the Emerald Dash bore kind of provided an opportunity for something more like a capital budget because it's this one time, over a number of years, but significant event that the town had to respond to and significantly increase. But now that that has sort of made its way through, as Dan was saying, we can't keep funding regularly, this is really a maintenance item, you should be paying cash for it in your operating budget as opposed to borrowing, or even if we pay for CNR, through CNR, you're crowding out something else that you're going to have to borrow for. And certainly, as interest rates find their way up into the threes and fours, you're just kind of wasting money. This should be better directly spent on the maintenance item itself. So this is an example of that. It's a small step in the right, $25,000 maybe need to grow in the future, but we also have the benefit of some new equipment, including the bucket truck that we acquired last year that allows us to supplement some of the work with our own in-house crews. So we think that number should be number for next year.
This is a bit of a breakdown, a higher look, or a closer look at some of the changes underneath the solid waste line. The solid waste line, as it appears in our budget books, is showing as a reduction in $218,491, or 8.45%. However, that number's somewhat slighted because of the council's funding last year for the faulty waste pickup. We did have some significant increases to certain lines, related mostly to contract service with our hauler for both the curbside waste and other recycling. And then we're also looking at continued escalation in the tipping fee cost per ton. So we do have some larger increases in that. In this year, we also are looking to fund for the first time in my time, overtime underneath the solid waste line for some events at the transfer station. The Sustainability Committee is where we actually are in the final throes of getting a mattress recycling container, as well as an electronics recycling container at the transfer station, to be able to host these events more frequently locally. And the cost that we're seeing here would be for one Saturday event a month with two staff members, and that would allow us to open up the transfer station for these services which are free to us otherwise. The only fees that we have associated would be this overtime. Those are actually funded every time you buy a mattress, the right mattress recycling really is a tax that's included in your purchase. And the electronics recycling is through a company called Take-Two, who we partnered with on any and all of the previous recycling events that we've had. We have great turnout at those events, however, having them twice a year, April and November, it's something that we get regular question on, if there could be an increase in frequency. We saw this as a great opportunity. We will have these in place, and we have an event scheduled for April 6th as a kickoff in line with what our previous events would have come in at. And as I was mentioning to Peter earlier, it does offer us an opportunity to start looking at other services that we can offer while our staff is there and things for the council to consider.
Can I ask a question about that? Whether you just do the mattress recycling or both, the overtime amount will be the same?
Correct.
So it doesn't matter, because we know that, I mean, AJ's will take electronics every Saturday anyway.
Each Saturday, yeah.
So, but since you're there anyway.
We're there for one, we're there for another. Yeah, absolutely.
All right, I'm sure.
So maybe we could move the grass clipping event to Saturdays, or?
That certainly, that would honestly be a clear path on that one, they're having it on Saturdays. And again, you know, we could start looking into other opportunities that the council's The personnel request that I briefly noted as we've gone through some of these lines on the Administration side and included in the town manager's budget as a request for a deputy director, this would take the 50% funding that is previously in budget for the capital project manager position, and this person would take over a majority of those responsibilities on the town side, also being involved in the evaluation and implementation of energy savings and sustainability initiatives. This individual would be tasked with pursuing grants related to energy reduction and sustainability, while assistant in management of town facilities, assistant director in evaluation of energy contracts, and effectively in assist in grant application and administration. That's a critical role in the department, having been the capital project manager and having a backlog at this point of a lot of work that we really would like to get into and get done while continuing forward and evaluating some of these great initiatives that we can take advantage of. That role would be a wonderful one to have underneath our umbrella. Also, along those lines with the groundskeeper, I've then touched on that, we do have the large undertaking with Bartlett Park coming online, something of a full-time position dedicated really to that park after that point. This person would be able to take over some of the responsibilities that the individual assigned to Bartlett at this point is otherwise inclined to do, and also offset and implement a lot of the additional work that we continue to see grow. And we also have in there, not funded by the town manager's budget, is a building maintainer. Presently, we have two PW5 positions, which are a tier above that, a little bit more ground level position as I envision it here. It was a position that was funded years ago, the position became vacant and then it lost funding. Having an individual that could tackle some of the smaller scale stuff and free up our more skilled staff to tackle more critical issues and be more productive on a daily basis, this would be a wonderful thing for the council to consider more long-term as we move forward. And that concludes my presentation. We'll dive into the book, if anybody has any specific questions, you can look at the book.
Yeah, I just, I can't recall, the Park and Rec has no maintenance staff whatsoever? It's all Public Works?
The, so it was, right, 2018, 2017 into 2018. Adopted by the council the year before I started here, the decision was made to move the grounds maintenance function out of Parks and Recreation and under the umbrella of Public Works Department in full.
So they?
At the time they eliminated, there was one position eliminated, which was sort of a more performant position that merged with that. You saw the Assistant Superintendent of Highways and Grounds, those are the titles on, you should see highways, there's highways and grounds once the merger happened. So we only had four Parks Maintainer staff for the first few years that I was here, probably 2018, 2019, and into 2020. We then did add a fifth maintainer as the demands were just, again, off the charts. And then now with Bartlett Park South in particular, but also just really the expectations of the community and the user groups, maintenance responsibilities. I know Dan showed up there, even the turf field at Bartlett Park, I know sometimes there's a misconception that a turf field, oh hey, you don't have to mow it anymore, it's there, it's got the lines. There's some advantages to not having to line and stripe it all the time, but it takes grooming, you have to re, you know, the chrome rubber has to be smoothed over and everything has, so there's responsibility there, plus the great lawn and the additional town green area. We just know that it's more park than any one maintainer can do themselves. Basically with the number we have now, there's sort of one maintainer for each significant park plus open space, and we really need to, I think it's fair to say, for that park.
Yeah, they do roll over to the town facilities as well, they do the management and maintenance of the ground side at all the town facilities. So on top of the parks, parklets, and trail, the open space is 16 buildings that they're landscaping.
And that's a great point, there used to be another position even further back that maintained, actually there was one that just did town halls grounds at one point, and then there was, and those have all been pared back over the years and we're just finding that they're ready to bring up.
I just couldn't recall that Parks and Rec had no maintenance staff whatsoever.
The only one that falls underneath the Parks and Rec umbrella would be the gentleman assigned to the pool.
There's a pool maintenance person.
One thing that was nice about the capital projects manager position is that it's partly funded by Fordham.
It was, yeah.
So do they not have a need for project management like that?
So they're shifting around, yeah, they, I mean, I know this upcoming year, I think a couple of things have happened. One, that position evolved, we used to have an Engineering Operations Manager position was the title. Some of that has evolved as the various functions within Engineering and Public Works evolved over time. But there was also a time when the number- But there was also a time when the number of projects referred to the public building commission, twenty-nineteen and twenty-twenty was very significant, because dozens of projects over a couple of bunch of years. And we've been able to pare that back, and some of those projects are handled more in-house, directly by the Board of Education. Rich Collette and his team, then, manage a lot of their projects in-house. The capital projects manager, again, kind of came out of a need to staff public building commission and help manage all of those projects. Of course, being in that role knows it very well, and I think at this point, the Board of Ed feels they're able to handle the projects they have been assigned with. Again, pure built public building commission projects still go to the public building commission, but they were more sort of maintenance in nature, or smaller type projects that were previously referred. So they're gonna be handling those in-house, and they would like to not fund half of this position anymore.
And what would this person do then for the town? And I do appreciate you creating this new position that addresses some of the issues that we had expressed on the Sustainability Committee in terms of providing direction, in terms of applying for grants, coming out of the Inflation Reduction Act, and so forth, so.
Well, that's a big part of it. So I think, again, the other fifty percent, and candidly, it was fifty percent funded by the Board of Ed, but we were probably getting seventy to eighty percent of the value here, because the position's right here in town hall.
Even more reason to continue that.
It was great, yeah. I think they got wise to that. No, but I mean, partially that's true, but also, I think, you know, we are very capital-intensive, of course, in public works as well. So this position, the very, you know, the RFPs and the projects that, the bids that have to go out for our, I think there's, as Dan could probably say better than anyone else, there's still more than enough work for a capital projects manager to continue.
Right, we do.
But as we're funding, I think there is still an opportunity now, Board of Ed's taking theirs, we are, and we've been talking about this actually for a couple of years too, just the idea of elevating that capital projects manager position a little more to a deputy director that could help take the building maintenance, which is key, we've seen across our departments, including recreation, the pool, the boiler, which we'll be talking about when we get through the pool budget. You know, somebody that can help provide, you know, maintenance strategy and oversight for all of the various HVAC and electrical and building systems that we have. And then, kind of perfectly tied into that, is a lot of those are informed by sustainability and energy efficiency efforts, and the performance contracting that we do. Again, a lot of those things are, Dan has been involved in too, even as capital projects manager. So we see that future role as a deputy, of a deputy director, also being a sustainability coordinator and sort of able to bridge that, addressing some of the concerns of the Energy Commission, and probably staffing the Energy Commission potentially, or things like that could evolve down the line. But that's really the, that's where that added capacity, if there is any, we feel is most appropriate with adding those components into a deputy director position.
And I can tell you, all the members of the Energy Commission will appreciate that.
They probably would.
So as a segue to the fifty percent Board of Ed funding, and tying in to that, Dan, do we, do you, just your department, maintain the turf field at Cheshire Eye?
No.
Okay, so they do that?
They do that in-house themselves, correct.
But you talked about, you talked about as part of the parks that you're doing, do you do the fields at the schools other than the turf field?
There's four baseball fields that, based on an increase in demand over the last couple of years on the baseball side specifically, to combat what was a lack of usable fields. There was more user groups that were interested in field time than there were fields to accommodate for that. So in collaboration with the schools, Public Works resurrected, we'll say, some fields that were underkept, and now do weekly management of those fields for the recreation side sports.
Which ones are those standing there?
That's Doolittle, Chapman, Highland.
Not north right now. And part of the reason, so this goes back, and there's a couple of components that are important to know. One is, so the grass is mowed by the Board of Education during the school year, right? So when we say the fields, for instance, ball fields, it's the infield, it's the lining, it's the care of the pitcher's mound and the home plate, or whatever exists for each individual sports field. From the Board of Ed's perspective, right, the fields are basically a grassy area, they may play kickball on them, but their priority was never the conditioned playability of the infield. That's part of the reason, the user groups were like, we can't play at Doolittle, it's covered in grass in the infield. And we had to come in with our equipment and some contracting to resurrect those fields over the last couple of years because of the need. And we knew this was coming, but we also, as we were getting ready to shut down Bartlett Park for the Bartlett Park South construction, knowing a ninety-foot diamond and a softball field were being taken offline, and the council, we all talked about this at the time, we knew there would be a need to shift some of those groups to diamonds at some of the elementary schools. And we've partnered well with the Board of Education, but definitely, it was more of a net add to their work than it was to the Board of Ed, clearly. But we were the ones really, and our user groups were the ones pushing for the field use. Again, from the Board of Ed's perspective, for PE, it's a flat, mostly grassy surface that they can use, they're not in the care and maintenance, and the quality of the bases were falling apart and other things. So we've upped that game, and we've also resurrected, you know Chapman, there's sort of a lower field and an upper field, with the rapid expanse of now kind of two little league groups in town. That upper field had to be reclaimed last fall, that probably hadn't been used for baseball in over a decade, it almost all overgrown. And Public Works did an incredible job of bringing that back to playability for youngsters, so. That's how we, and then, of course, there's the summer, when the Board of Ed doesn't maintain any of the fields anymore, because they're not there, they don't have anyone, they're off redirected to other responsibilities, I guess, within the schools. And that's when our summer crews really help out, and you'll see summer kids dragging, and then even mowing the school fields that we may be using for user groups recreationally, but the Board of Ed is not mowing at that point, because school's not in session. So it's not as simple as
I think, so, I'm not, because I remember when my kids were in Little League, there was, you know, when the fields were wet or filled with holes, CYB or CYS would, had bags of dry stuff, and, or is the town now supplying that, and this town is now taking care of all of that part of it? If the field is wet, and they're gonna try to get games in for that day or something?
Definitely. I mean, what part of the reason that the fields, and this is something, you know, that Dan and George before, and John Golick have all kind of worked and collaborated on, that sort of system, in the end, led, well, it's wonderful volunteer work, that sometimes, if you're not, there's an art to dragging a field, that doesn't push up the mounds and create lips to the grass that can be tripping hazards for players. Speedy dry can't be used every time it rains, or it can ultimately harden into concrete the base paths, and kids slide and they scrape up their legs. So while, you know, I think that worked as sort of a, you know, a strategy given resources at the time, it was really when Public Works took over and started saying, look, these are things that we need to make sure we're maintaining, the fields are higher, more consistent quality. And then also candidly, talking to some of the representatives of CYB and others over the past four or five years, you know, volunteerism has kind of shifted over the last couple of years, expectations for what parents feel they should have to do, drag in field, prep a field. I think candidly, that's changed a little bit with time, and Public Works has sort of stepped in to, you know, make sure that we're maintaining it to a given level, but that has evolved, for sure.
Yeah, so they do, but I do know that there's some out-of-town groups who use our fields as well. Hopefully, that's probably another time for a talk with John, but that might be a time where we say, hold off, because, you know, we're, I think our fields are getting overused. So I'm assuming though, if, the CYB, CYS shouldn't be the ones making the call whether a game's gonna be played on the field, that it should be Public Works or
John typically makes those calls, rare the occasion where sometimes, right, you might have light rain in the morning, but later in the afternoon, he'll, I'm on all those emails, I'll see, he'll say, use your best judgment, if it starts to rain, please be responsible. And the leagues, you know, are for the most
Well, I just get concerned, like, if, especially the adult leagues, where they're playing late at night, and it's, the field's not in any condition, but they don't care, you know, and then they ruin the field more, is there a way that we say, hey, listen, we're turning off the lights, you can't be playing on this? I mean, is that's possible that they would do that?
Which lights are you referring?
Well, the light of Cheshire, Cheshire Park.
Cheshire Park has the lights, right?
Yeah.
For the softball
Yeah, and that's where they usually play at night, and they play it all eleven o'clock at night sometimes, or later.
The only other lights are, again, other now than the turf field and high school, are the rented lights that both youth football have used in the past at Cheshire Park, and of course, Cheshire uses for their season.
It is hard to get the fields, our softball team has trouble getting on Cheshire fields. We play in Southington and Wallingford because we can't get on the Cheshire fields no matter how hard we try.
Yeah, and it's been an issue for a long time. So on Parks and Rec, and I can say that parents have come about the quality of the fields for a number of years, I mean, I've been on Parks and Rec now with Peter for a number of years, and so we see these parents, and Mark Cunningham comes in to our meetings regularly, he's a representative from Public Works, and they do an incredible job of maintaining those fields, and it's come a long way in his last few years. And just to, you know, again, validate what you were just saying, that parents' well-meaning, were unintentionally destroying some of those fields, and so having consistent, high-quality fields, I think is really important. And I know Don too, John, has been looking at, in fact, I think it was our last Parks and Rec meeting about, particularly like with the turf, you know, we're gonna have to anticipate, how are we going to address people who want to come from out of town and want to use those fields? Right now, there are enough people in town who are gonna book that up to begin with.
Right, well, that's what I'm thinking, yeah.
But Parks and Rec is actually reviewing some different plans, and different towns have handled this in different ways. Most often, what they've done, I think, I think it was Glastonbury, it's, I mean, they're incredibly high prices if you're coming from out of town, and so it was gonna be like three hundred dollars an hour, and you had to commit to four hours, and so really, most people from out of town are not going to pay those kinds of fees to come play on our fields. So, but that's something they're very aware of, I can say, from being on Parks and Rec the last few years.
Dan, could you just go back to the slide that had the major expenditures again, just one more time? That one, yeah. Could you just, like, explain the increase when you're talking about the three-point-three, the three-point-four million on the highway sites and drainage, and something about fees change, or something, I didn't understand what you were
So, yeah, and actually, I could jump in only on this, because it might be a good opportunity to flip to that page of our horizontal book, if that's okay. Is that the ten-two-sixty-three line? So if you go to page one, one-twenty-one, you're gonna see highways, sidewalks, and drainage, and sort of an opportunity, that RWA fees, I just wanted to touch on, for instance, the RWA, it's one of the biggest line items, honestly, in our entire budget. If you flip forward to the top of page one-twenty-three in the horizontal book, you'll see water main service charge, RWA eight-hundred-and-two-thousand dollars. The top of page one-twenty-three, so that specifically, that is a per linear inch fee that we have, that we pay for the existence of water mains, and it's really for the availability of fire services. So it's effectively, if we need to tie into a hydrant to put out a fire, it's the availability of that water for us to use for those purposes. Conversely, the RWA does pay property tax on the lines, so you'll see that elsewhere. It doesn't quite come up to this number, but it's something of an offset, because they do own that as part of their infrastructure. But that eight-hundred-and-three-thousand dollars is, I think, always one that I know councils have looked through and said, what is that for? It's not water usage, it's not our water bill, it's the availability of water, primarily for fire response. And it's just a very big number.
And that's a, and that's a flat fee?
It's a flat fee that, that
They do it by linear, linear for a hundred mile
It's per linear inch of
Oh, by inch.
Do you know the general offset?
Pretty accurate.
No, what's that?
Do you know the general offset?
Oh, of the tax, well, the RWA, yeah, we could pull, so that line, that line gets set, it's based on our mill rate that we will establish. But if I pull on the revenue tabs, Jim, right, we could probably show you here real quick. You have to flip to the vertical book. And again, there may be a few other things included, but just to give you a rough idea, if we go to
Page one-eleven.
Page one-eleven of the vertical book, although the page will be horizontal, just to confuse everybody. You will see line, it's called SO, right, South Central Regional Water Authority, it's line ten-four-two-zero-four. You'll see in fiscal twenty-three, we collected six-hundred-and-seventy-seven-thousand dollars. That's their tax bill for the existence of that infrastructure. The reason you see a reduction of fifty thousand dollars is because our mill rate is supposed to be lower in this portion, right, from thirty-five mils to twenty-eight mils. And so you see that the recommended offset that I have there, these are all calculated based on our mill rate assumptions, and as you change those in this process, that number, well, it's what we call a mill rate sensitive item.
Yep.
That's at seven-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars. So I guess if you looked at it as a net, as tax revenue versus expenditures, you know, you're looking at, what is that?
About
Yeah, it's about seventy to a hundred thousand dollars.
So does that land, that the types are in, ever change value? I mean, I mean, we went through reassessment, but you're saying that our mill rate, isn't that working right now?
You're assessing
I think it's, I think it's, I think it's valued at about seventy thousand dollars.
I think it's double.
I was thinking that
Yeah, it's not, it's not something that's valued as part of rebalance, I'm not sure, it's more of a, it's like a
It's valuable dirt right there.
Does it stay standard all the time?
I would have to follow up to confirm that, in terms of what the value is. I know it grows as more water line is established
Oh, yeah, more inches, yeah.
But, so then, does our water availability charge actually?
Yeah.
So, again, I don't know if there's depreciation involved either, so I really need to look at that.
I would just thought we were reassessing
Every property is treated exactly the same with this, I assume.
That's my understanding. I will say, for some reason, in Simsbury, it didn't show up the same way in our budget, but we have an aquarium water authority, and I, but I think, again, it may be that they're not paying much or any taxes, but then the towns aren't paying a charge, so I imagine there's different balances out there.
Water's the biggest value we get, I mean, we get, our water is so expensive, considering what value it brings to us, so it's hard to complain about water charges.
Yep.
Can I ask you something else about the snow and ice removal? Just explain a little bit, we have a couple of light years as far, as far as I can tell, and what are we planning, I read it, but I just want to make sure I understand, what we spent versus what we're likely to spend in maybe a more normal year, where we have more snow and removal?
Right, it's always a moving target, basically. You know, you wanna plan for the best, but we've been tracking where we are in budget, we've looked at where we were last year. Even when we don't necessarily have snow events, some of the storms that we've seen have been even more costly in ice, and the amount of salt that we're using to put down, so the projections that we've put forward, we're able to actually show, more than anything, a reduction on the fuel line and the fuel side, more than we have a reduction on the services that we're providing, the overtime. We do see a use of that time, again, responding to, you know, ice events, laying down salt, preparing for storm events that frankly, sometimes don't happen, we see a use of time. So we're still seeing the trends on that side, and then even if we do see a reduction in the use of salt, the per-ton price of salt has gone up substantially, and it's projected to continue to go up. So it's, again, it's hard to peg down a number when it's such a moving target, not only, again, in when and where are we gonna get these storm events, but the cost of the materials that we're using to combat them.
So three, almost four-hundred-thousand dollars is the right number, you're saying?
That's based on what we've seen this year so far, and from last year and the year before.
So that's a light number.
That, I wouldn't call it a light number, I think it's, again, we were able to offer some savings on the fuel side, because those numbers, over the last couple of years, we've been seeing a surplus left over, and, you know, Sean and I were able to confidently come to a number where we didn't feel like we were giving up too much to underfund the line, but give something back based on how much we've been saving.
And this is a topic for another time, but I just, I don't know the answer to this, maybe other people do. I know we were disappointed with the town street tree, which was maybe never decided to be a town street tree in terms of its ability to withstand was maybe never decided to be a town street tree in terms of its ability to withstand storms, et cetera. Has beautification, or has anyone taken the lead on, on establishing a new town street tree? Do we have one? And I know it's not.
Beautification committee is working on that.
They're working on it now? Okay, I'm just, I'm curious.
Yeah.
Because that'll have, you know.
Unfortunately, we still have the Bradford piers, but they're working, they've been working on, on, they have a whole list of trees, small, medium, large size, and they're going to, it's probably pretty close to getting to the point where they're going to be presenting it. They're going to be working with businesses, at least in the south end of Route Ten, where I don't know if they're going, what, if they're even thinking about taking down any of the existing trees, but.
But they will, but they will identify something that people can follow and kind of?
Yeah, yeah.
So it'll, it'll grow over time, if, you know, with, with more people putting them in with new projects and things like that, if there's a consistency. I was just curious.
Is the pretreatment, does that save on salt, or is it almost a wash because it's?
I would, I would, I would say that, that, that saves on some salt long-term. If you're trying to catch up on, a lot of the surfaces that we're pretreating on with the liquid, I'm assuming you're talking about, that's on our steeper slopes, that's on those, those roads we're most concerned about, our emergency vehicles being able to access at all times. Once you establish, obviously, an ice pack or a snow pack, you're, you're putting down more material trying to get that up off of the road than you would be if you were combating it from the bottom up and keeping that road wet from the get-go, as opposed to the snow pack.
Can you explain why, under snow and ice control, the projected overtime is considerably more than what the actual for 2023 was?
That likely has to do with an assumption that was made in last year's budget, as whether it was prepared, reflecting back. We have had some substantial snow events where our crews were in excess of twenty-four hours. If a snow event, you know, again, a perfect storm is the, for us, is the one that starts and ends during a regular working day. The ones that cost us the most money and which are more frequently seen than the latter are, are events that happens on weekends, on holidays, and any mix thereafter. It's really easy to eat up a budget line like that. And again, some of the events that we've had have fallen in that category where they were, where we were paying that higher overtime rate.
Yeah, we did see too, last year, even a, even a year where everyone just, you know, anecdotally knew it was a light snow year. The two or three storms we did have, and as Dan said, sometimes ice storms, to us, it's like, hey, I didn't have to use my, you know, snow blower. I didn't really feel like much. An ice storm can often be more expensive than a snowstorm. And if it happens on a Sunday, or MLK Day, or any, which we did have that light year, we had three storms, and they all happened Sunday nights into Monday holidays. It can cost as much as six storms. And it's, it just shows the sort of predictability. And longer-duration storms versus shorter. That ice storm, we had the January council meeting, you know, was it, sorry, February council meeting, where we had to de-ice the entire parking lot. And the amount of product you're having to put down, you know, can get very expensive.
We don't insure against any of that, do we?
Not, no.
Do people still do that? There was.
We did that ages ago. And one year, one year, we hit the jackpot when we, yeah.
Really?
Yeah. But that was a long time ago. I don't think insurance companies do it anymore.
The only other thing I would just say to Dean's question too, is those projected lines, the, the kind of funny thing with the timing of when we produce this budget, right, department requests come to me in January, mid-January, those numbers are the best. And we do, we, we modify them when we know they're going to change, particularly projections. But we're making those projection assumptions in the middle of snow and ice season. So that number, again, knock on wood, if we're actually through, which I like to think we are, the snow and ice season this year, oh, there's been years that hasn't been here. Then, you know, again, I could go probably pull the actual account. It would not be surprising if we're a little bit under that number, based on where we were a few weeks ago. But again, that's probably our best estimate, as about four or five weeks ago, when these budgets were first being crafted.
Well, so there's going to be more roads now too, so that's why you have to go a little bit more on it too. A quick question. We, you have here the line item, acting director. No, I don't think you wanted to leave a little. The act, I mean, you have that projected for the year. Is that, because this is a budget per year, I mean, are, are we going to continue with that position as an acting director? Or is there, is there a salary difference between an acting and?
Yeah, there, there certainly would be. And I think there's, there's, we need to have some flexibility in that number as we work through when I'm, you know, making final decisions and appointments in that position.
Right.
But yeah, certainly, it's, it's a little bit of a confusing time, because we're, we're still in an acting phase, and we basically have one person doing two jobs, and doing a great job doing two jobs.
He's acting well.
Ah, he's acting well. But no, I appreciate you bringing that up. And yes, it's, it's definitely something, you know, yes, in a perfect world, we'd have a little more budget flexibility for the director position. That is significantly down from where we had the prior position.
Right.
So, you know, as we, as we tune up the final budget, those might be some things that I make a few recommendations on come April. But yes, it's a, it's a point well taken and understood, first of all.
Dan, back, back to one twenty-three, the top of one twenty-three, the fifty-four oh nine. How much of the fifty-four thousand increase is the RWA? Actually, it may be, I apologize, maybe, maybe it's Sean's question more than that.
Yeah.
Question a little bit.
I would need to see what that number was last year.
Yeah.
The RWA number is sort of fixed, right? So the fifty-four thousand should be something else? Well, that number, that, that number for the, the RWA, that number comes from Regional Water Authority.
Yeah, that number's not fixed. That's based on, that's based on the rate they set.
Yeah, so if their, if their rates went up, our rates went up.
Last year, they didn't, and then, and they're on a slightly different, I think, calendar than we are.
They sent us their best anticipation for the number.
But then it went up seven and a half percent, which I think is the same as what, it was the same percentage that residential consumers had, the increase. I think it was seven and a half last year. And so that can reflect though, at that number, that can be most, if not all, of that increase. I can get you that. I don't have it right at my fingertips, but I can find out the actual number.
And, and I guess it, it's kind of a backwards way of asking the question I wanted to ask was, I noticed that on the slide, you have streetlight charges and that stuff. How is the whole streetlight project working out for us?
That's, that's working well. So that, that includes the streetlight electricity and maintenance and the, obviously, the fluctuation of ever-source rates. That drives the projections for those numbers up. So I, I think that program's worked well. I, I would say that, you know, we do get, you know, streetlights that go out. They, they are more frequent than we would have anticipated. LEDs are supposed to roam for such a duration. But a lot of, we have been able to work through warranties with the vendor that we use for, for management of those. Fielding calls getting taken care of. They do have, you know, search boards and components on them that do fail, sensors, the, the light sensors, emergency sensors. But that, that program's worked well. We are realizing the savings annually on that. And now that's, that's the rate that we have. And it's all based on a dust-filled on calculation, based on, and again, with, with growing infrastructure, growing number of streetlights, that, that does naturally move up when we get more into.
Is the town responsible for putting this, the lights up on new streets, or?
No, that's part of the developer.
That's part of the developer, but, but then we take ownership of it?
Yeah, so what the developer would do is, is when we take ownership of the street, the developer would, would put the, the structure in, the lights, the wires, everything like that. They would have it energized under a private account with EverSource. And then after the, the council were to accept the road as a, as a municipal asset, then we work with the developer to actually take those streetlights and the account over from that added to our infrastructure. Do you want to start the beginning here, start at the line of the line stuff?
Yeah, we definitely can, if you, if you'd like to just sort of flip through.
I mean, I've, I've asked mine unless there's other.
So, have any other questions? And I, and I, again, I really didn't touch on the public property side, if you wanted to look at that. I mean, just looking at the, the bat line, the total number for public properties, that's a total number that's being represented as a, as a savings of twenty-four thousand five hundred and eight dollars. I didn't really jump into it as a big change, because, tried to focus on the additions rather than the subtraction. But in this case, we, we're able to tighten certain things up. Specifically, again, projections for the electricity are coming in lower than anticipated and have been tracking in that manner for the last couple of years. So we're able to tighten, tighten up on that side, offering the savings.
Yeah, so just to orient folks too, if we want to flip quickly to public property, that's on page forty, forty-seven, starting with forty-five for the summary. Again, this acts as a, you know, again, this is a cross-departmental, it is under direction of the Public Works to, it's, it's cross-departmental because, again, every individual, like the library doesn't have its own electricity account within its budget, right? So things like that, as you're seeing. If you go to page forty-seven, you will see the two positions, the building maintainer, crew leader, and the building construction specialist. And then, again, just as a good example of what you'll see throughout the book, when there's been a request, but then a, a reduction by myself, you'll see the building maintainer, PW three new at sixty-seven thousand one forty-two. You then see a town manager adjustment of sixty-seven thousand as a deduct. The reason you see an increase there is because there was also a sort of a smaller proposal that the, the senior crew leader and the other construction specials were both PW fives. That increase there supposes that that crew, that, uh, crew leader position actually moves up to a PW seven position, so it'd be negotiated through the union. But so somebody's in charge of the department, I feel like they should be supervising, and they should have a slightly higher salary range than the person they're working with and over in that case. So that's the other change you see there. But the overall, the larger request for the maintainer position was not able to fund in this budget. But again, if you slide through past personal costs, we don't need to go through all of them. Obviously, we'll see building supplies, light bulbs, towels, cleaning supplies, all of those things, individually detailed in the respective line items. Dan just mentioned electricity. That's a savings of sixty-four thousand dollars. And you'll see all the various components and facilities for which the electricity bills come through this line. And then, all the way on down through the Grange parking lot lease, performing contract lease, a variety of kind of other cross-departmental items.
What was that, the, the, under construction, fifty-four oh four, that, that you decreased to three sixty? They were asking five twenty-two. What was that?
Yeah, so, yeah, that's a good, I'm glad you pointed that one out. So the five twenty-two, this is another great example of capital items versus operating items. In a perfect world, we'd be funding more of the larger maintenance projects and repairs in our operating budget. And that's where the request first came through, at five hundred and twenty-two thousand. You'll see when we get into capital, we regularly ask for, the council supported, refunding of general building improvements, building maintenance and improvements, funding in the capital budget. Not unlike the trees, and again, in a perfect world, that would all be in the operating budget. The problem with that is it just drives up our expenditure operating budget higher than a level I was able to support. So it was requested in both places, both the capital budget and the operating budget this year. And, you know, you'll see in some years, we've had, look at the actuals over in 2023, I mean, we have, you know, sixteen buildings, many in different states of age. And, and again, general good upkeep, but it's an older, we have older buildings that have things break, or modifications are needed, or offices are needed to be, you know, reorganized and expanded or changed. Things come up. And that's, that line, fifty-four oh four, maintenance and repair services and building repairs and improvements, it's not all nice to have, a lot of our service contracts and other things. But there's a, an element of it that are just things that come up during the year. And we've historically leaned on the capital budget appropriations to fund those. And I'm recommending continuing to do so, although, again, in a perfect world, if we were just able to move a lot of this back to the operating budget, it would save the town longer term.
Dan, I lied, I have two more quick questions. Back to one twenty-eight and one twenty-nine. Starting on one twenty-eight, fifty-two oh four, program materials, the increase in fertilizer, grass seed, topsoil, and the like. Fencing, by the way, is coming into Jeff Solan's budget.
Yes, I understand that. I, I had heard that earlier today.
Make the adjustments.
So the thirty-five, the thirty-five thousand dollar increase, is that because we are establishing some new fields as opposed to maintaining some new fields?
I would, I would more say that that's trying to continue forward progressively at getting these in a better maintained position. We've seen increases in the cost of these materials, as, as you'll hear through everybody's budget presentation. A lot of the driver for these increases are related to the cost of material. There is an, you know, assumption for the addition of the cost of materials, but also an addition in the, the volume of materials to allow us to better maintain the infrastructure of the state itself. And there's nothing new coming online there.
Yeah.
But again, we're taking Bart Lamon. There won't be any immediate need at this, this calendar year. But once we get into next year, there might be a need, again, for, for fertilizing and maintenance of those while we continue to look forward for infields and play. Those prices have, have gone up already.
And if I could just add, just like fifty-four oh four that we just looked at in the other department, those are really the two lines in this entire budget where I think most significantly, you'll see the actuals, even in fiscal twenty-three, the demand, we've just been underbudgeting both. We candidly need more funding. The actuals in 2023 were two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. The demands and the amount of funding it's taking to keep the fields just need to be at the appropriate level, and it's been underfunded. So one twenty-five just really isn't, I wouldn't be surprised if this year, that projection for the current year is even higher than one twenty-five, once we're through the spring season, getting the fields ready to go.
Well, because it, this includes, does this include, how much of it includes the new Barton? So this.
Yeah, I mean, certainly, there, there's a large component of that going forward. It's going to be turned over to the town in, in a good condition, but it's going to need to be maintained. And, but again, I think it's even more so, the work done in twenty-three, establishing those, those diamonds we talked about earlier, contractors to come, air raid, and, and do some of the more technical field maintenance that we don't do in-house, which, which isn't a lot, but there is, there are times that we, we have to, to do that in supplement. And, and the cost of those services have just gone up. But so it's really in response to the demands. You know, it is a conversation, this line in particular, and when we do meet with John Golick, you know, for years, he's been talking to myself and Jim, and I think we even kicked around the council a couple of times, you know, the idea of a special or an internal service fund, where, you know, the added fee, those fees we're talking about from user groups, particularly outside user groups or specialty requests, you know, as those dollars go up, and this is sort of, as he can tell you, the way it was done in Wallingford, where he was the director for many years, they had a fund where those fees didn't come into the operating budget, they went into a special fund. But at least that way, you knew most directly that that money could be distributed out. And in this case, because Public Works does the maintenance, a parking rec is sort of the gatekeeper for the use of the fields, it would allow, you know, down the line, and again, it's not like there's a huge cost savings, because you're removing revenue items from the same budget where you have the expenditures. But in terms of dollar for dollar, you know, direction of the revenue that's coming in towards the actual need on the fields, and potentially, taking a harder look at, as we were sort of just talking about, maybe raising fees in certain areas to account for the fact that these expenses are going up, and you sort of see it more, you know, directly. That's something, again, probably a conversation we have with John down the line, but an opportunity, maybe, if he's booking a number of fields out, Public Works is incurring all the expense, but they're not really in charge of whether or not the event happens. And I think having something to say, hey, this event's going to happen. And by the way, this group needs fertilizer, and I've got fifteen thousand accrued in this account. Here's the money for the fertilizer, and it doesn't, it only show up on the expenditure side of the business. Conversation probably for later, but. Conversation probably for later, but it kind of speaks to that issue.
And then on one twenty nine, the fifty three oh five water, it says irrigation system. So this, is this the, the cost of the water for the irrigation?
Yep, absolutely.
All right.
Is Barton the only place that we have irrigation?
Barton will have a good deal of irrigation.
Is there other?
And that'll be, that will be the town prop, Barton.
Cheshire Park has it too, right? And McNamara has it too, doesn't it?
I believe, I believe you're all correct, and then we also have public properties and some of the apartments have Barton.
Oh, yeah, okay, okay. You don't tap into Wells on any of them?
Or neighbors?
Yeah.
Does anybody have anything else for for Dan? I have one question, not a budget related actually, but since you're here. Fairly often when, especially at campaigning time, you go to the door, people tell you things are frustrated about or disoriented about. So pretty much every other year, I'm hearing people say, I asked the town to do this, I asked the town to do that, whether it's like, you know, fix a drain or curb or or something like that. What's the process when someone calls you guys? How do you sort of keep track of those requests and do you, how much do you follow up with people and has that evolved at all over the years?
So we do have a work order system. We use it for management of our highways, grounds and our buildings. Our, our office staff, they'll, they'll field the call. If it's a highway related matter, that work order will be generated, designated to the appropriate staff member. And it falls into a queue with any and all of the other work associated. They generally will cultivate a list of the larger areas for, say, for instance, curb repair. And they'll, they'll prioritize that based on the timing of when the call came in with the other work orders as well as proximity to schools and such of that nature. You also have the sidewalks that come into the same category and are prioritized by the highway superintendent. Generally would, would encourage you to have them call back if it's been some time. Sometimes things do get lost in the queue and we could certainly take additional notes. If it's something that isn't being addressed, the office staff can definitely bring to my attention and I can coordinate with the highway department appropriately.
Do, does, does someone contact the, the person that made the complaint and let them know it's been taken care of if it's something that maybe is?
If, if they would, if they request that, certainly, yeah. If, if it's requested that we call them back as part of the work order, either the highway superintendent or his designated staff, or at times the office staff will call back if it's something requested. And it's generally a question that's asked while they're taking the information on the call.
How, how many of these requests do you tend, do you guys tend to?
Uh, that was actually one of the, yeah, approximately a hundred and twenty different calls a month. And that includes the, the grounds, the highways, actually internally from other department staff. We're fielding approximately a hundred and twenty calls. That's on top of the things that are identified internally.
Yeah.
You know, our crews will go around at the end of the storm season and they've already done it once this year. It has identified areas where curbing was damaged. They're responsible for providing back to the highway superintendent a list of damaged curb areas, the locations and approximate lengths. And then once the season allows, we'll get out and we'll get a removal and replacement.
So once it goes on some, you know, your cube sheet or whatever, it doesn't come off there unless it's like completed or something?
No, not unless it's taken care of, correct. And and they're generally, you know, resident, if they call in, they're, they're generally given the, the work order number that they can call back and make direct reference to. And that also includes the name and telephone number of the folks that are calling.
All right, that's good to know. Thanks.
Absolutely.
For Public Works?
Ready, okay, move on to engineering and WPCD, so. So again, just to orient everybody, just a little bit further within the Public Works functional area. The actual proposed budget for engineering specifically is really only just a couple of pages, starting on page one thirty three. But then we will also, if you go, actually, just right after, yeah, so right after we cover that, on the next page, one thirty seven, we'll get into Water Pollution Control Department. We have our superintendent, Dave Milano, here, as well as Merrick, who's an engineer. Merrick, get set up there first and we'll cover these, these departments.
Thank you, Dan, did a great job. You want to do this for me, please?
He, by the way, he owes you a lunch because he zeroed out line item. Yours, yours are all a hundred percent increases. So especially going after him, he's made you look bad. He owes you lunch.
You got it out? Well, we have a few things in common, one of them is, this is my first budget presentation, so bear with me. And how much time do we have? Because I have like over two hundred slides.
Nope.
Now can't do it.
Not quite that much time.
All right, I'll make, I'll make.
Ask John Golic how that works.
He's never read the end of it.
Exactly. Poor John, we still love.
Well, thank you for your time. All right. So as Sean mentioned, the engineering department has been broken off from the Public Works. So my department consists of the engineering, the water pollution control department, which is the plant and all. And the water pollution control authority, which is the authority governing the plant and all the sewer regulations. So this presentation is going to be dealing with these three items. Our mission statements for engineering, the mission of the engineering department is to provide quality engineering and project management for planning, design and construction of the talent of Cheshire's infrastructure needs. And also deliver technical support to Public Works and all other town departments. For the water pollution control department, we strive to serve the public by operating a well maintained wastewater collection and conveyance system. And in doing so, taking necessary steps to protect public health and the environment. Our goal is to provide sanitary sewer needs in efficient and cost effective way while continuing planning, maintaining and upgrading your facilities to meet current and future needs. Just a quick overview of the department. We have engineering, WPCD and as well as administration. Under administration, I share with Dan Public Works, the assistant to the directors, she'll be a plural. And under her, we also have two additional administrative assistants. So in the department, yes, we are separate, but yet we're still, you know, joined at the hip, we're still using the same resources in a department which I think has worked extremely well. In addition to that, we do offer staff support or liaisons to the WPCA, to the Energy Commission and to MVCOG. Some of our responsibilities for engineering, I'm not going to read them all, but just a quick overview. We do many complex plan reviews for the planning and zoning commission as well as the inland wetlands commission. We do provide the designs, some design services for public improvement projects for the town as well as construction inspection services and oversight. We also administer the pavement maintenance program for the town and we are responsive, responsive to public concerns and inquiries. The question was raised regarding the work orders that was mentioned. Engineering is also involved in that, we do deal with a lot of drainage issues or tree ownership determinations. So those are filtered through our department as well and we do take care of. For the, for the plant, the plant operates and maintains four million gallons per day wastewater to your facility and ten sewer pump stations. We have over a hundred and twenty miles of sanitary sewer collection system. We are on a twenty four seven on call readiness for emergency situations. And just to point out that our facility does have a certified lab, which is an in house testing, which is like, I believe, one in five in the state of Connecticut. Now jumping right into the operating budget. The way I broke this down was in the three categories, engineering, WPCD and a WPCA. Going across all the way to the end, you'll see the percent budget for my department. So engineering, the budget is reflective of nine point two percent. WPCB is ninety point eight percent and WPCA is is less than one percent of the budget. The reason for that, you can see that we're only requesting five hundred dollars for a line item, that's pretty much for mailing, I believe it is. So that's, that's how the breakdown is, you know, for this department. Just focusing right now in the engineering aspect of the engineering, the categories are salaries, supplies and services, contracted services, professional expense and equipment. You can see that there is a percent change in the percent of the budget of the engineering section, which totals a nine point two percent that I previously mentioned. So the, the big ticket item here would be contracted services. We're doing an increase or requesting an increase of seventy two thousand, which is obviously a large two hundred and seventy one percent increase. But keep in mind, it's only three point four percent of the budget. So it seems like a lot better, it really isn't in this case of things.
What does that represent?
We'll be going over that in the next two seconds. So the major budget changes, and this is who we are, are is the rental and leases. So the engineering department has just purchased a GPS survey unit. And we also have AutoCast software, both of which require annual renewals for operation. So that line item has been added to, to our budget. And under the other contracts, we have an increase of sixty seven thousand five hundred. This is regarding the MS four general permit that is required for the municipality. And this line item has previously been, been paid for by a capital line item, which it should not be. It's very similar to the tree situation, it should be really taken out and and not be part of the capital. By doing that, you're actually completing the, the actual use of the capital of what it was intended for. So that's why this is required to be changed since we're operating.
Merrick, can you just speak a little bit to what, what the contract is for, so just the, the sort of reporting that's required as part of the MS four permit?
Yeah, with that, so there, there is a yearly, I believe, monthly reporting for the annual stormwater. So BNL is a contracted, engineers who come out and they actually do testing of the water that comes out of the catch basins during storm events. And that gets tested to the lab facility and reported and, you know, presented to us on a multi basis. They also provide a service to us for doing self inspections and giving us knowledge. So we do have to go through a safety course yearly on that, which I think we just went through one a couple of months ago for that.
So that's a cost to a third party?
That's a cost.
This is a costly third party consulting firm, correct?
And it's a state statute.
I was going to say, it's, it's required by the.
It is required. If you do not do this permit, it does jeopardize future funding. So this is a catch, you're kind of, kind of stuck.
Merrick, do they, this is similar to the, to the, to the price from last year or has that gone up dramatically?
It's the same price.
Same price, does it remain the same?
Same price, yeah.
Just a little bit of capital item.
That's a great idea, I'm glad you moved it, that's wonderful, yeah.
This is page nine, another two hundred. Now jumping into the, the water pollution control department, same categories except we added a line for utilities. Here you can see the, the big item is a contracted services, we're doing an increase of sixty three point seven percent, which is relative of twenty point five percent of the budget within the WPCB.
You'll go through that as well?
I will, yeah. So the, the major changes here is, is the utilities, water. So we've added a new pump station to our bankroll, Dickman Road. So additional water is, is being used there and last year's budget was approved at thirty five thousand dollars. The actual budget, the actual fee that was spent was fifty one thousand. This was last year's budget. So you can see that, you know, it was under budget to begin with.
Why was that, do you know, why, how, that's a, that's a big amount?
That, that is a big amount, but it was, I don't know if it was, the budget was caught, I don't know if it wasn't budgeted properly, I don't know. But it was, it was originally adopted at thirty five thousand and and the actual was fifty one thousand, that was last year.
That's, that's way underutilized, that pump station right now, does that have anything to do with it?
Well, that wasn't even in, in, in play at the time.
It wasn't, so what?
No, that was, that was fiscal year twenty two, twenty three, that's, that was that change.
Okay.
This year was thirty five thousand as well, so they carry the same number. But the year to date right now is at forty eight thousand and we're not even in, in, to the end of the budget season, so we are definitely.
So it's fifty and up?
It may, may not be, but I'm going by last years and just going by with the pattern.
Well, if you're saying we're at forty eight something now and we still have a few months left.
So you were using water before it was actually in service? I don't understand.
Dave, I think Dave can take this.
We, we use that water to clean out our pump station, well, well, is that the pump stations?
But that's for all of them, not just that one? Okay, I was going to say, I thought it was all associated with Dickerman.
Yeah, so Dickman was associated with that. So that's the plant and all of the pump stations.
Okay, that makes more sense.
So that's, that's a change of fifteen thousand, that's being added.
And it's consistent with run rates, so.
And you can see that it's, it's a forty three percent change, but it's really less than two percent of the budget. So the next one is the construction line item. We are asking for fifty thousand dollar increase in this line item mainly for the upgrade required for the conveyor system. This conveyor system is used for the sludge hauling purposes for the town. The conveyor is not in operation right now, it's actually losing a truck and they're backing it up and forth just to load the truck, which, which really isn't correct. So this really needs to be, needs to be fixed, so that's an increase there.
How long has that not been working, Merrick?
So right now, the way it's set up is the conveyor drops the bio solids into the truck right into the middle. We don't have a way to, you know, load the back, the middle and the front.
Yeah.
So I've only, I've been there two years and it's been like that the whole time. I, that's how it was built to work, but we're trying to modify it so we can evenly distribute the, the cake solids in the dump truck.
Because just looking at run rates, I mean, twenty three was, was fourteen and then the, the expected expenditure for this year is twenty five, so.
So with this one, obviously, it's, it's, it's an increase of two hundred percent, but once again, it's, it's less than three percent of the budget that we're proposing. Third one is the property maintenance, again, with the Dickman Road pump station, now that also includes more maintenance. This previously was also under budget. It was, the last year's budget was approved at thirty five hundred, but the actual cost was fifteen thousand. So that's why we're asking for that. And great, it's a three hundred and twenty eight percent increase, but really less than one percent of the budget. And this is the, the tricky one. This is a change of a hundred and fifty nine thousand, it's a seventy two point four percent increase and it just reflects thirteen percent of, of the budget. The reason for this increase is, basically, the, the town right now is self hauling the sludge removal to a facility. And the preferred method would be to hire a third party hauler. In order to do that, there's obviously going to be a, an expense for that. So the estimated fee for that hauler is, is a fifty thousand dollar annual charge. So that has been included in that. By going to this third party hauler, the, the alternative is actually to purchase a new truck to facilitate this. And that's, that's something that's in the capital budget. So by going to a third party hauler versus buying another truck for the town, the preferred method is to go through a third party hauler. In order to do so, there's going to be a fee of fifty thousand roughly annual for hauling. So part two of that is that Synagro, the company for your disposal, has increased their, their fees by fifty two percent. That's an increase of a hundred and two thousand dollars. The reason for that is that previously, I believe, we were under a three year contract with no increase. The reason for that is that previously, I believe, we were under a three-year contract with no increases or very minimal increases.
It was a, it was a one-year extension on top of a three-year, and so we had to sign a new agreement and that was the price they gave us for a new agreement.
Yeah, so.
And there aren't many.
No, no.
And then lastly, uh, part of that increase is that, uh, the plant also has to undergo a general permit for, uh, stormwater discharge. This is separate from the MS four program. Um, and that also includes, uh, reporting, staff training, site assessments that's done on a multi basis. Uh, this fee is the same fee carried, uh, from the last year of, you know, ten thousand three hundred. Once again, there was no, uh, line item under the operating for this annual fee. So, I'm, I'm not quite sure whether this was being paid for in the past, but that's where we stand. So, that's why there's such an increase that it's really, there's three items that's been affecting, um, this line item.
So, a new truck to do it ourselves is two thirty, but if we could pay a third-party a hundred grand a year?
No, fifty.
Fifty, fifty grand a year.
What's this, a hundred and two thousand?
No, a hundred and two thousand is just.
For disposal.
Is just disposal of what's in the truck.
That we have to pay for no matter what.
That's, 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 yeah.
Whether we do it or something else.
Whether we do it or, or a third-party hauler does it, correct.
How much, how much, how much person time is there to do the hauling? I mean, you guys, you got some extra time here?
So, that's the other, yeah.
Yeah.
They didn't speak to that, but it's also maintaining, you know, CBL and everything else that you have to do.
Yeah, everybody in the department has their CBL. Um, it takes about four to five hours to fill the truck. And then depending on the situation and water bearing, I mean, they're pretty much at capacity with solids. So, sometimes there is a wait time, which we do have to pay overtime for, cause we can't just come back with a full truck.
Yeah.
So, it could be, you know, on a good day, it might take two, three hours. On a bad day, it could be five, six hours of hauling.
How often do you do it?
Um, during the winter, we do it twice a week. During the summer, like, three times a week.
So, that's a lot, that's a lot of personnel.
Staff time. That's, that was part of the decision.
Yeah.
And, and that's why I, I personally support that option. Um, you will see in the capital budget when we get to it, uh, page two hundred and twenty-six. Uh, we do have, uh, there was also a simultaneous request because the truck we are using is fairly hanging on.
It's been in our garage for, for a while now.
Yeah, it was, uh, the last whole month it was in the shop. So, I had to actually hire out a separate company to drop off roll-offs just to get the sludge out.
So, you're not gonna tell anybody when you sell it that what it's used for?
That's the mechanic's least favorite.
You gotta have it in the garage.
How often is it, uh?
Probably tell it what it's used for.
How often is that? Once a week or is it?
The truck is, uh, twenty-some weeks in the winter and three times in the summer.
Okay.
So, they give you an extra, a few extra per, a few extra, a few extra hours. I'm sure you have work for, for the.
And it's two guys. The job itself is two guys, where if you went to a hauler, you don't need one operator to just fill their roll-off and they're done.
So, I'm not suggesting we, we reduce staff, but it seems like there's more, there's gonna be plenty for staff to do with this.
Yeah, you can offload their time, get, utilize them for doing stuff off this company.
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
And we did have an analysis done by, uh, by our consultants. And, um, it, it's, it's, it's almost a, a wash in which method you really wanna go to. Uh, but there's liability involved as well by having your own truck and doing all that.
Well, if you spent two thirty and you got all the staff time you got, it sounds like it's a six, seven-year payoff by four, before the fifty thousand dollars a year is.
Yeah, yeah.
It doesn't make a lot of sense.
Most municipalities don't hold a roll, like, buy it off.
Sounds like a good deal, fifty grand.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, you will see it in the capital budget. In fact, you'll also see it in the, uh, you'll see it in the town manager recommended line when we get to that, but that was only kind of to give you the two options. If we do go this route, you could cut that two thirty from the capital budget.
Correct. Well, we had to keep it in there those.
Oh, so it's in there right now?
It's in there in both places.
Yeah, it's in there, cause we need the truck or that's, we need one or the other.
Right.
Only, yeah, to kind of force the decision hopefully, but yeah, you can cut that if you, if we fund this at this level, then you can cut that. It's in year one of the capital budget.
Let's just cut the sludge out of the budget.
Yeah, all right, no, no look in the bathroom.
No more sludge in this town.
I could take a turn.
If you go, if you go to the third, the third-party hauler, you still, you guys still think you need this, uh, sludge conveyor upgrade as well?
Well, that's, that's the main reason. That's the driving force. Yes, because the trucks that they use are, are different than what we currently have.
And that's a one-time increase. Yeah. That, that fifty thousand for the conveyor, that's just to get it modified and then that's it.
That's like our metro plan.
Goes back down to twenty-five.
Correct, yes, to twenty-five.
Yeah.
You're saying you need that because we want to do the third-party haul?
Yeah.
You still gotta get it out. You still gotta get it out and accommodate the new trucks.
Cause if we have a roll-off service, we no longer can move it back and forth. Cause it's our dump truck, we can start up and move. The roll-off, where they drop it is where they drop it.
An actual dumpster with no rest.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, does that mean we could also look at overtime from that department?
Yeah, possibly.
Yeah, possibly, yeah. It's up to, it's up, yeah, yeah. We'd have to look at it over the first year and see if we can reduce it after that and see, you know, where overtime's coming from.
Just, um, Sean, if you're starting a, you know, a list or whatever.
You only have thirty-five hundred in your map, right?
My list, my list books.
You only have thirty-five hundred for overtime in the engineering.
No, it's, uh, no, this is WPCB.
Yes.
Which is, which is seventy-five K, which is, which is up from, um, fifty-five last year, so. I mean, I, I let it go over, but I'd be in favor of going back to the fifty-five and let's, like, like they're saying, let's see where we are, um, and go from there.
Jim's made a note in the list.
All right, I just wanna go over some accomplishments. Um, I'm not sure if any of you are aware of. Um, Wallenford Road, we did, uh, design improvements. Um, we're gonna be adding some parallel parking to this area. Uh, Mixville Park Phase One, um, which is including a ice rink. We're gonna be doing a boardwalk, extending a parking lot and having a drop-off area. So, uh, that, that's gonna be a nice feature there. I'm not quite sure what Phase Two is. I just know what else Phase One does. Let's go around.
Do you have a timeframe for that, just?
Parking lot's in construction.
I, yeah, and the rest of the summer before summer?
Yeah, the neighborhood around that. Uh, we hope the next couple of weeks have most of it at least shaped up, um, before we really get into the, the grass growing season is to have that whole area, um, completed and hydroceded.
And the ice rink, we're trying to get it in before, obviously.
Before summer?
No, but before the next season.
It's a roller, Richter.
Yeah, does, does it function as both or is it just ice?
Now, it's just ice.
It would be grass.
It's gonna be grass, so it could be a picnic area afterwards, yeah.
I asked that for roller hockey.
Yeah.
Uh, Treasure Park Drainage, uh, the other side of the tennis courts and pickleball courts, there are the new drainage system that was installed there. Uh, road reconstruction projects, we do have, uh, designs, um, completed for the East Johnson Avenue, um, Phase One, which is starting construction, um, April first. Uh, Cine Court, we just completed the design there and also not added on here, but Industrial Avenue, uh, the road reconstruction there is also designed. Lakeview Avenue, design was complete. Uh, if anyone's gone down Lakeview Avenue, as you're driving in, into the roadway, there's a culvert that's there. There's actually no, um, barrier, no, no, it's kind of an unsafe situation, but this is really a must. Uh, that needs to be repaired, but the design is complete and the construction is, is part of the capital, uh, budget we presented. And as well, you, you all know, the sidewalk policy and the EDE transition plan was, was adopted and then completed, so.
Hey, Merrick, going back to Cine Court, I was curious, what, what did you uncover in the design on that and what's the fix gonna be? How much of that is gonna be kind of at the surface and how much is gonna be kind of below the surface with the?
Well, we did have some borings on it. We did find some organics all the way through the roadway system. So, that is part of the problems. Yeah, we're, we're actually back and forth right now to, uh, figure out the, the proper approach. Um, the preliminary design, I should've said, was, was complete, but we're still going back and forth.
See, you don't know, you don't know what the solution's gonna be. I was just curious, cause I know that was a trick.
The rough budget numbers between one and one point two million for, due to repairs.
We've been talking about that road for years. It seems terrible.
So, there was, there's organics under the road.
There is organic, yeah.
What does that mean?
Topsoil.
Compressible soil basically under the road. That shouldn't be there.
That's why it's sinking.
It's like topsoil and, and stuff that really isn't made to, so, you know, it's slowly, it's not structural, so it's slowly kind of compresses and continues to settle with overtime, so.
Isn't that only for part of it, not part of the road? Like, it, toward, toward the Mary.
There's one section.
Toward the Mary, the South Mary part?
Yeah, there's one smaller section that, uh, it, it would appear that it.
Well, there's actually a couple of sections. So, there's, there's two sections that have, um, their, their wetlands crossings. Those are where, where the most problems are.
Okay.
Yeah, and, you know, everyone says that they're surprised this road lasted that long and it's actually held up considering.
And for East Johnson, what part of East Johnson is that again? We're, we're doing?
Uh, we're doing the east section from McClosland, uh, to the bridge.
McClosland, that's.
That's, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So, not beyond, uh, Cheshire Street, not, not East Johnson, beyond Cheshire Street?
No, no, no. And then Phase Two, which has already been designed, is gonna be from, uh, the remaining from McClosland to Route Ten. That's gonna be the next.
Yeah, the first part's in front of the trucking.
The idea behind that project and the design is to improve the, the, the road to an industrial standard to accommodate the increase in truck traffic from both the, the greenhouses as well as the Whole Foods that are, uh.
Right, right, okay. Someone over there's been complaining about this for quite a while.
Yeah, I mean, basically, the, the thickness of the road is more of a residential standard, I think, right?
Yeah, you have like three and a half inches of asphalt built on top of sand, which there's, again, it's a different type of issue to have. It is sand versus, uh, organic material, but nonetheless, it leads to the same thing, which is an early demise of the, the road.
Given the truck traffic from the, the growers and all.
Right, right.
Yeah, big trucks continuously.
You've seen a lot in town of all the distribution?
No, I mean, you know, specifically to, to in, industrial out, or industrial app, um, uh, East Johnson app. Uh, the majority of West Johnson app was constructed to an industrial standard, um, more just in that area where we have that concentration of industrial truck traffic. And again, those roads were constructed, uh, that whole area of East Johnson was farmland. Uh, you know, it relatively is still a farm, right? But with the addition of, of Whole Foods, which is a twenty-four-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week operation and the commercialization of the farms, you're seeing this additional truck traffic, which is the job.
So, those were some of the accomplishments that we, um, completed this last year. Um, moving forward, uh, a few things that I would like to, to dig into. Uh, currently we have, uh, we're going for an INI study and a capacity evaluation of our plant. Uh, we are meeting, um, we're having interviews next week, uh, for a couple of firms to, to go forward. And, um, that, that is something that's well needed in this town, so we're looking forward to that one.
Just real quick, for, I know, any opportunity we have, and please never hesitate to ask me questions, but INI is a phrase that everybody knows necessarily. It's inflow and infiltration, which is basically water getting into your sewer system. Um, that shouldn't be there, uh, for a variety of, of ways, so maybe everybody already knows it, but.
People putting their some pumps into the storm drains.
Well, I think it's, it's a lot more than that.
It can be that, but it's also, right, it can be leaks and, and manholes that, that need to be better secured that, uh, when we have these, especially these recent rain events, um, and we can see, I mean, Dave's got horror stories. We all know some of them, of course, too, but of, uh, you know, rivers that are flooding over and that are probably, in some cases, flowing directly into our sewer system.
Not only that, but it puts wear and tear on our infrastructure, on our equipment and all that.
And that's a long degree.
And, and also it creates violations with the state.
Yeah, but it puts a plan over capacity for sure.
Correct, so it's, it's.
So, we're not able to actually treat it in the water.
I was interested in this. I would, we can go back to it if you'd like, if you wanna go through other things first, but I did have a couple of questions on it, Merrick, if you wanted to.
Um, I am almost complete, but let me just finish this one slide and we'll be, we'll be good to go. Uh, Farmington Drive Culver, um, we're in the process of trying to get that, um, reevaluated hydraulically to see if the piping there is, is sufficient, um, if not.
Is that just before the connection with Sharon?
Yes, yes, yes. This is the feeder, uh, right after the Norton School.
Yeah.
So, that's, that feeds into this.
Between Norton and Sharon.
Right.
Where the waters can be made across.
Right, so we're looking at that. Um, there is a capital, uh, budget for, uh, for some of this work, so that's why we're getting, um, into it on the, on the drainage side. Uh, Jarvis Street and Marion Road Sidewalk Extension, um, that is primarily geared for the school. So, we're gonna be looking into getting the sidewalks, um, out to that area. East Mitchell Sidewalk Extension, um, with the increased development that we have on that road, um, there really is no safe way to cross, uh, Route Ten right there, so we'd like to put a connector in there. Uh, one direction is going to where Chase Bank is, um.
Yeah, that, so that's the part that John had brought up before, where the sidewalk rate, um, where that little hill is.
Yeah.
Across from Stop and Shop.
Right, right.
So, you have to come in.
Some big retaining wall or something there?
Gonna have to, yeah, it's gonna have to.
Probably something will have to be done, probably very similar to West Main Street what happened on, on there.
Thank, thank you for including. That's really important. That's gonna be problematic, otherwise we.
Yeah, we're using the sidewalk extension money the council approved last year for that project specifically. We'll see a separate capital appropriation for the Jarvis and Marion.
It's gonna be great when people from that, that, that development can walk over to the, to the, um, the walkway.
And it, it makes sense. It's, especially with all that development that's there.
Yeah.
Uh, Leaks Road Highland Ave Intersection, um, right there we have, um, I believe there is, uh, we're trying to do some lane widening because of that.
They have a turn lane or?
I believe the intent was to have a turn lane.
That was a request that came through the, uh, the Board of Education, um, and, and helps to alleviate the backing up of, of, of traffic coming out of the school.
Is that the surveying they're doing now?
No, that's the state of Connecticut.
That's, that's repaving.
Survey for their paving operations, correct.
So, what do you, what do you plan to do over there? What's, what's the?
Widening the, um, the exiting lane.
So, it can have a right turn?
Right, right, turn lane going north, northbound or?
Have a left there and turning lane.
Yeah, left-hand turn landing southbound?
Uh, southbound.
Southbound, so.
Yeah, cause that, that's, that's tough getting out of there, cause it's just one lane. You got your buses and your cars.
And that's a DOT. I guess that's gotta be a DOT project, right? I mean, are they?
Uh, no, there's not to be.
It'll be our project submitted.
But it'll be reviewed.
You'll submit it to DOT, but we'll, we'll take.
It's our intersection.
Okay.
Yeah, and speaking of, uh, traffic issues, the last one, Elm Street Academy Road. This one is something I would love to dive into at some point. Um, I do have it proposed in a capital budget. I believe it's under year two. If you wanna hook it up to year one, that'd be great. Um, but that intersection, I foresee, we're all aware of it, and getting out onto Academy from here is, is difficult, so.
So, what would you, what would you, how would you do? I mean, I agree we'll talk about it, but while we have it here, what is the plan? What, what is the plan?
The plan is to widen and add a separate turning lane and widen, widen, widen the throat, so you have more room. The worst part is coming onto Elm Street from Academy, cause there's really very.
Cause everyone's, the, anyone taking a left turn is, is, has, in order to get past the bushes and the, and the gar, and the dumpster at, you know, in that plaza, you're sticking, you have to stick your nose out. Anyone wants to come around you has to really kind of swing around.
Right, so the thought is, we have some preliminary sketches already to, to widen the throat up, so you have more and more room, so.
So, there'll be a clear left and a right turn lane go in.
That's where you're talking about, at the, at the.
You're talking about Town Street.
Elm Street, so if you leave the town hall, take a left on Elm Street, you hit Academy Road.
You're talking about the one down further on the other side of where, where there's an island.
You go down Elm Street, uh, Mabel's Table's on your left, West Factory's on your right.
Right there you're following. There's no island there.
So, it's a very narrow lane, so you can still sneak by to the right, but it's, it's very difficult to try to squeeze three, three cars. Two sitting here and then one turning on to Elm Street to meet the direction.
Right, that's the worst part is someone turning onto Elm Street, so.
Yeah, it's a very narrow.
I don't like to tackle that, but that's, that'll, that'll leave that in your court, but that is, um, you know, proposed in, in your project. And then lastly, just wanna thank you for, for this time from your engineering team.
So, going back to INI, just a couple of quick questions. You're interviewing consultants. What is, what is, what is the goal of bringing on consultants right now for the INI? What is gonna be their objective? I, I thought there's been study being done on this over time, so is it gonna?
Right now, we're going through, uh, we're planning through the, uh, Clean Water Fund Act, um, where the state is going to, um, uh, reimburse fifty-five percent of the fees.
Of the consultant fees?
Well, and, you know, I believe also construction fees.
And the construction fees. So, how fast are you gonna be able to, to identify? I mean, is there a goal to kind of fast-track identification of potential?
We don't have that in place right now, so part of the process is that we have to apply, uh, we have to, uh, get some notes from, uh, consultants, uh, through an RFQ process. No fees, there's no really, uh, major scope outline. It's really just, uh, the, find out their credentials and see who is, is gonna be suitable to do the work. Uh, the next step obviously would be to, uh, I believe submit to the town for approval and then we go down that road.
Do we have an idea where, where the focus will be or is it town-wide or is there, do we know if there's areas that we're gonna be focusing on?
I believe the INI focus was town-wide.
It's town-wide. We don't have, something like the honey pot intercept or anything? There's nothing that's more prevalent to INI that we're aware of?
Not that one, because that one, right now, we have an RP out there. Um, we're gonna be getting, um, contractors to actually repair that work. That one is under construction or the plant has to be under.
My only goal is we, we do kind of, uh, just a, what's the word I'm looking for?
We need to act more instead of.
An act, you know, action plan as opposed to a study. I mean, if people, cause I'm a consultant. We'll study stuff to death because we make lots of money. We love nothing to get done. It's our, it's our goal.
And that's the thing, we've already identified, we've identified, you know, you know, certain areas already, but nothing's being really done. So, we already have, we're actually going forward with that and you'll also see in the capital that I'm requesting additional funds for that.
That's wonderful. Now, if we can get consultants who wanna get in there and actually help us get solutions sooner than later, I'm, I'm overjoyed. I'm happy we're doing that. That's wonderful. And then I saw something, maybe not the, maybe not the appropriate to neither, but there was a big number in there for a force main. Force main improvement in the capital, capital numbers. What are we doing about, I know there was the force main breakdown in the south end of town. Uh, what are we doing about that, that force, that force? What are we doing about, I know there was the force main breakdown in the south end of town. What are we doing about that, that force, that force main? Are we looking at that, trying to determine whether or not there's any issues with it that are more prevalent or that was an isolated condition? Is there some way to do that? Do we know?
We are in the process of taking, well, the defective pipe for, um, uh, inspection to determine what the cause was, and that is, uh, in the process. Um, but that break, you know, made me wonder, if that break happened there, you know, how was the rest of the lane? So, trying to be a little proactive, I threw that into five-year capital and in year five, just to keep us thinking that there could be an issue there and that we had to come up and generate a number, and that's why it is, I believe.
That's why it's in.
A little short of nine million, no.
Is there? And, and I, I'm not an expert in, in sanitary. Is there a way to evaluate that through, you know, TV inspection or anything else in that force main to?
We cannot just.
Assess whether there's other issues before we think about full remove, replacement, because that's a pretty big number.
As far as I know, we can't shut the force main down, so we can't do anything internally. However, externally, we can dig up and do some test probes and, and, and check the condition of the pipe. That could be done, you know.
Well, there was, cause there was ob, issues in, um, where we had a, some grease, uh, in the pipe over on Main Street, I think last year, was it? We caused, caused a backup on, on there. And I, I know I asked this question because I thought Chesapeake was in charge of looking at the, the grease trap, but they said, no, that wasn't in their purview. But who is responsible for making sure that, you know, restaurants and stuff are not shoving grease into the pipes that are clogging them and causing this elsewhere? As we get more restaurants and things like that in this town, I get concerned about, you know, the inspection of these things. Is it, that up to you guys or?
Funny, you mentioned that. I actually have a meeting tomorrow with Maura to determine, um, whose responsibility it is and try to come up with a game plan. Uh, Dave is also gonna be there to try to come up with an inspection program, find out who's responsible with what we're.
Okay.
I just have a question about, uh, the canal. We had spoken at one point about the dredging and the canal and flooding issues there. How does that fit into all of this?
Sure, so, yeah, so we won't, um, so that's a capital item, um, that was proposed. Um, and again, tonight, obviously, we won't probably be able to go through, um, the dozens of other capital items that are within these, uh, departments, but it's a, it's a very relevant one. And so you will see in, uh, in, in the vertical book, um, the dredging of the pharmacy in that, West Main Street, that is one that's been in there for a couple of years and has moved its way up. And it is on page, one second.
The Farmington Canal, does that maintain the state money or is each portion maintained by the town it runs through?
Uh, we, the town maintains.
So each portion is maintained by the town that runs through?
And the trail. You mean the trail or the town or street?
So any dredging that we do?
Is us.
Is us. Not necessarily New Haven won't, possibly wouldn't dredge or?
They'd have to do their own, I would guess.
Jim, that's last year. That's, that's the wrong section.
We're all responsible for our own sections. I mean, we're trying to coordinate, I would guess.
That's what you just said, but dredging one town from another seems, like, is that a coordinated event? Everybody dredges at the same time?
No, it's only a small section. I mean, dredging would, for instance, be, um.
Yeah, you wouldn't do the entire line.
Section from West Main Street. No, you're not, yeah, that would be incredible.
Portions where, where there's a silk.
One eighty, Sean. Thank you. Uh, so if you go to page one eighty in the vertical book.
At the lock twelve area?
Before that, like next to Ballin's Sock.
Oh, yeah, right.
Where it's all overgrown and.
Yeah.
So this is an item that this was a little hard to find. It's page one eighty, uh, under, uh, Planning and Development, so it was first, um, requested.
Hundred fifty thousand?
Given a part of kind of the overall West Main Street planning and development, uh, initiatives that we have in the area. So there's a hundred fifty thousand dollars that's proposed, uh, for dredging, fencing and other embankment, embankment site work at the West Main Street crossing. That's an area where the water, twofold, the water runs very, uh, shallow there and it is prone, uh, to flooding if the catch basins get packed up, which happened this last year.
So you're just talking right, right at that intersection, where, where it crosses West Main?
Right, kind of the south side, past, past sort of the Ballin's Sock building on the, on the.
Towards corn left.
Towards Cornwall, but not all the way down. I think this money will, dredging's very expensive, uh, but it would be enough to get and sort of also aesthetically beautify that area where the trail is. But also provide a relief to flooding that sometimes happens at the West Main Street crossing there. It's happened for many years. It's better now with the culvert that was widened a number of years ago. But that proposal there, um, is, is a tragedy one that had for a couple of years moving its way. It is proposed in year one of this.
Have you, have you considered the, the cost associated with the nature of that material, Sean, there? Is that, is that in the budget?
I, I don't, in terms of the, um, disposal of that material.
I mean, we know, we know, you know, how much Ballin's Sock it went through in terms of their, their.
Right, so it would, it'd certainly limit the amount that you're able to do.
I don't know, I'm just asking.
I thought it was included, to be honest, but I have to confirm. Are you concerned because it may be polluted?
Well, there's no question on material there. It's, it's, it's got some constituents in it that may be more costly to, you get rid of.
Yeah, the disposal cost, Scotty, is much more.
Just, I'm just asking if it's in the budget.
That's a good question. I can confirm. I know that number was first, Andrew Martelli pulled that number from, uh, initial proposal, so I have to confirm for sure.
In relation to what Greg's talking about, and, and I didn't notice it, maybe I didn't look hard enough yet, when do we, when are we budgeting resurfacing the trail itself in sections? Or is that not in the?
That's not in the current five-year capital plan.
It's not even in five years?
No, no, it's not. Uh, we, a couple of years ago, you know, if you've seen, we did all the saw cutting and patching along the entire trail, um, it was a hundred and seventy spots or something throughout. And then Public Works, uh, did the stone dust, um, edge to the trail last year, um, in-house, um, and that came out very nicely, but there's no current proposal for a full repaving of the entire seven.
Could I ask that, that, you look at that and get it, I mean, maybe not next year, but I would think within five years, sections of that will probably have to get repaid.
We can get a number.
The southern, the southern section of the trail.
Yeah, I don't know if the northern section's more recent, maybe that's, that's four or five years out, but I can't imagine we'll live five years without having to resurface that.
Yeah, so. Yeah, that's, done at least four or five different sections in those.
Can you take a look at it?
Yeah, I mean, some numbers.
Yeah. Okay, I guess, uh, just bringing this up, obviously unrelated, but I think we talked about, uh, lock twelve, the lock twelve part of it obviously is not, but, but I think, was Andrew looking at the grants for that or something like that to, to try to clean up the lock twelve area?
Yes. Yep, yeah, we did. We, um, uh, we just, we received grant.
It's gonna be on your April agenda.
We have to, yeah, that, oh, it's, it's, it's why I'm like, freebie, you have this.
Yes.
It's, it's a folder on my desk.
Hold it away. Okay, see you now.
We do have, we, we, we are in receipt of, uh, of state bond commission money for, um, lock twelve improvements, um, including, um, the, the actual, uh.
Gazette.
The area, not the gazebo, but the museum, and we have some proposals for the use of the, the house there and everything else along, but, but basically a lot of aesthetic work in and around.
Right.
You know, any stumps and everything in there.
Yeah, repointing some of the, uh, the stonework that's in, uh, the canal itself to really make it, um, there's a plaque there if you go by, like, it's cracked, it's been cracked, I think, in front of it, as long as I've been here.
That was the first section of trail, thirty, it's gotta be thirty, thirty-five years old now.
So some improvements and some accessibility improvements.
And those, those lock gates lasted a long time.
Yeah, so I think we have, um, a hundred thousand, a hundred thousand dollars.
Quite, well, just, a great question, just remind, remind me of that, that it was kicking out there.
That's right.
Yeah, we're very excited to receive some, yeah, on your April sixteenth agenda.
Sean, the, um, WPCA contractual services for the recording secretary on one forty-two, it, it looks like last year we moved them all to somewhere. Do you know what, uh, where they got moved?
Yes, so all, all meeting, uh, quarters are now under general services, budget for all boards and commissions.
Okay, got it.
And that you will find, um, if you flip towards the beginning of the budget, under page thirty-nine, forty-one, um, you will see minutes clerks. There's now one catch-all budget, it's twenty-five thousand dollars, uh, line fifteen oh oh four on page forty-one. And that was, yeah, that was a change we made before, uh, this will be our second year, into our second year then we're in now. And so, yeah, you'll see that zeroed out, or a lot of those were zeroed out last year, too, but you'll see some, there's digital actuals there.
In the, uh, WPCB budget, the fifty-seven oh one, the insurance line is fifteen percent increase. Is that just a, that's just a premium increase or is there an increase to the amount of insurance we need?
What's the string?
Fifty-seven oh one, uh, page one forty.
It'll be a Jim question. Um, general insurance fifty-seven oh one is up twelve thousand five hundred twenty-four dollars.
Yeah, that's, that's what our consultant recommended this year.
Insurance is going up?
So it's just premium increase?
Yeah.
Are you seeing that across the board for all your insurances? That you're, that you've seen a significantly, fairly significant increase in cost?
Yes. Yes. There's, there's a chance that they come down here if, if, if they can lock something in before we finish the budget, but the last couple of years that hasn't happened.
Mayor, I noticed, I noticed that you had a twenty-five, a twenty-five, a twenty-five thousand dollar, I think, line I'm in for consultant services for reviews and things like that, I think Sean reduced it down to twenty.
I reduced it, yeah.
And I know you, the PNC does charge developers for certain reviews. How do you decide when they get charged and when the town pays those directly?
I don't think that the planning does charge developers. I don't think there's anything in place.
There's nothing in place?
And I asked for that same thing because there's some reviews that I'm just not capable of doing, some drainage.
Yeah, no, I know, it's not a big number, the twenty grand for the stuff that's going on in town here.
Yeah, so right now, that's why I'm asking for Atlanta, because we need, we need to do those reviews, but we should look into that just to.
Most towns do push those, those, those third-party costs out to developers, so it's just a way, it's not a big item, but I just was curious how.
No, but it's, it's still an item, so it's, it's to be addressed. So maybe I'll try to get together with, um, Mike Liddon, uh, he will come up.
I thought some of them were getting passed on, but maybe not.
So any more questions for, uh, Mayor, for Dan, for Dave?
Thank you very much.
Or anyone else in the room?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Good job, both of you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Yes.
Um, do I need a motion to adjourn again?
Sold.
Second.